Good evening and thank you for joining us this evening for our City Council meeting. We'll go ahead and get started. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Here.
Bray?
Here.
Cheatham?
Here.
Lurick?
Here.
Ortega?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Glad?
Here. Thank you. If you'd please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, after which, if you'd remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Three is the Consent Agenda.
Oh, sorry.
The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any one member of the council so desires, any matter listed can be moved to a separate Agenda item. A. Minutes. Council may wish to waive the oral reading of the minutes and approve the minutes from the November 14, 2019, Pocatello Fire Department Master Plan Meeting, the January 9, 2020 work session, and the special City Council meeting of February 6, 2020. B. Treasurer's Report. Council may wish to consider the Treasurer's Report for January showing cash and investments as of January 31, 2020. Good evening, Ashley. How are you?
I'm good, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Ashley Welsh, Chief Financial Officer. I'm here to give the Treasurer's Report for the month of January 2020. The city had total cash and cash equivalents of $63,850,220. Total long-term investments of $4,985,285 for an overall total of $68,835,505. This amount is up $15,161,213 for the month of January. On page two of the report, we have highlighted key receipts for the month. Transit received federal grants for December of 2019 in the amount of $73,126. We also received intermountain gas franchise fees, $88,152, which was up 9.82% from the previous year. Idaho Power franchise fee, we received $101,949, which was up 0.38% over the previous year. The Transit Fund also received state grants for November, December, and capital of $106,182. Received Idaho State Liquor Tax of $128,977, which was up 2.12% over the previous year. The airport received grants totaling $131,179. We received Idaho State Sales Tax Revenue Sharing for $605,935, which was up 2.35% over last year. We also received Idaho State Highway user fees for $692,730, which was up 0.77%. We also received our biannual payment, large payment from Bennett County, for $16,718,808. The remaining section details the net change in cash and long-term investments for the city. Page three of the report is for trust funds. We had total cash and cash equivalents of $1,130,672. Total long-term investments of $3,510,533 for a total of $4,641,205. Cash receipts for the month were $47,161. Disbursements were $51,073, and the net change in long-term investments was a negative $14,452 for an overall decrease in the trust funds of $18,364. The next report lists all the funds' cash balances with their respective change for the month. Page five is Discussion and Analysis for Your Review. And lastly, we have the Five-Year Trend of Cash Balances. This report continues to reflect a very strong cash position for the city. I'm just going to go over the negative funds. The Transit Urban Fund has a negative cash balance due to pending grants. Fleet Management is negative due to pending interfund billings, and CDBG is negative pending grants. Are there any questions?
I have one.
Yes.
I've been tracking the cable fee, and I don't see it on there. How often do we receive that?
We receive that quarterly. It should be, if not come in next month. They're a little bit behind these others.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions?
Thank you, Ashley.
Yep.
We'll move on to Pocatello Arts Council Reappointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Ann Knapp Anderson to continue her service as a member of Pocatello Arts Council. Ms. Anderson's term will begin February 17, 2020, and will expire February 17, 2023. D. Sister City Committee Appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Tip Savanna... What did we decide?
Sabuma.
Sabuma, to serve as a member of the Sister City Committee, filling a long-term vacancy. Ms. Sabuma's term will begin February 21, 2020, and will expire November 18, 2021. E. Council Decision Hatch University Subdivision Short Platte. Council may wish to adopt this decision approving the short platte for Hatch University subdivision, which subdivides approximately 1.33 acres of land into three residential lots, subject to conditions. The property is located at 540 University Drive, Pocatello.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd move for approval of Agenda Item Number Three, the Consent Agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Adamson. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Four, Communication and Proclamations. We do not have any proclamations, but it looks like we have an ISU student here. Thank you for joining us. It's great to have you with us tonight. We will move to Agenda Item Five is a Calendar Review. Council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. On February 25, at 2:00 PM, will be a Joint Cities County School District ISU meeting here in City Hall. On March 5, 9:00 AM, will be a Budget Development Meeting. On March 5, 4:30 PM, will be an ICrimp Training for City Council. March 5, 5:30 PM, will be a Clarification Meeting. March 5, 6:00 PM, will be a regular council meeting. March 12, at 9:00 AM, will be a work session immediately followed by a Budget Development Meeting. Other events, the Mayor's Scholarship for Students program applications are due March 6. Citizens Police Academy is now accepting applications. Contact the Police Department for more information. We will move to Agenda Item Six is a Public Hearing, rezoned by contract, 2909 Poline Road. This time it's been set aside for council to hear comments from the public regarding a request from Clint Martin, represented by Dean Funk, for a zoning map amendment to rezone by contract to the property at 2909 Poline Road from the existing commercial general to light industrial to allow for industrial services and sales. Is that the one I want?
No.
That's the one I want. All right.
Did you ask ex parte?
Oh, I do have to ask ex parte. Council, have you... Oh, I need to open it, though, right? I declare the public hearing open. Have you had... Council, have we had any ex parte communication or contact?
I said hi to Dean when we came in.
I don't think that would be ex parte communication. So, Dean, would you like to...
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember, staff. I'm representing Clint Martin, who bought this property.
Dean, if you'd identify yourself for the people.
Okay, I'm Dean Funk, real estate broker here in the area. I live at 528 Nathan and Chubbix. I moved to Chubbix so I wouldn't be tempted to run for council again.
You got seven of us up here considering the same thing.
Okay. Anyway, this property was a very busy thoroughfare at one time. Rick worked there. I bought a new Honda from him in 1999. Anyway, where does the time go? But as time wears on, you can see the auto dealerships have moved to the north. It was time for this to be repurposed. We did repurpose the one site directly to the north where the Harrington Building Supply is for roofing supply, and it's been a good fit for that. However, so Clint moved his auto dealership into this property and spent a considerable amount of money bringing it up to speed as there was some deferred maintenance and things like that associated with it. But anyway, things went good, and then he had a problem with a manager that was embezzling, and so he flew down and closed things up and said, "I'm just going to stay in the Wasatch Front." So, we put it on the market. And in the meantime, we found a Fortune 500 company, which would be a good fit for it. We thought it would fit with the existing zoning, but they, in staff, said that we needed to have a zoning change to light industrial to accommodate some of the equipment that they would be selling or renting out of there. They'll be renting big track hoes and trucks and things like that down to smaller items like you see just down the road on Poline there. So, we think it's a good fit for it, and directly the west boundary of this property is already light industrial, has been for decades and decades. And off to the left, and then, of course, the school district right there. If they had to have that operation and it wasn't a government, quasi-government, they'd have to have a light industrial zoning, too. So, we think that it would be a good fit for this and like the council to consider that. So, do you have any questions for me?
Council, any questions for Dean while he's up?
Okay.
Good. Thank you. Then we would ask staff to...
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Carl Anderson with the Planning and Development Services Department. For the record, as noted in the agenda detailed by the applicant, this request is for a zone map amendment by contract, rezone the subject property from the existing zoning of commercial general to light industrial for the use of industrial services and sales. The subject property includes 2.57 acres, more or less, and is located at 2909 Poline Road. The public hearing was held before the Planning and Zoning Commission on January 22, after which the commission voted 6 to 0 to approve the request with conditions listed in the staff report. The commission's findings of fact have been submitted and are included in the packet before you. All noticing requirements have been met, and no public comment has been received, no written public comments have been received at this time. Staff took a phone call inquiry about the application several weeks ago. In consideration of the application, the proposed development, staff concludes that the proposed zoning map amendment by contract is compliant with Pocatelli Municipal Code, assuming the conditions listed in the staff report are met. A full analysis is detailed within the report. Should the council approve the request, staff recommends that the conditions listed in the report and recommended by the commission be attached. With that, my presentation is concluded. I'm happy to stand for questions.
Questions?
I have one. Why 2909 Poline when the building's always been 840 West Cedar?
That's the address that we have listed there.
Any other questions? Okay, and you said that you had not received any more written communications. Have we received any in the clerk's office?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Then we would look for any testimony supporting the application. Any testimony uncommitted to the application.
I'm supporting it so that the property gets cleaned up, but I was kind of concerned about the actual boundary of what the property would include. And also, if it's changed to the zoning, is there anything that will be included in there to require some kind of a beautification of that property? If we're going to clean it up, let's clean it up really nice. So, I didn't know if there was something already in code to do that since you'll be changing it, and especially since it's next to the school district and there are other types of retail across the street and on the corner opposite to how it looked nice to kind of fit in with that whole thing and to clean up that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others uncommitted to the application? Any opposed to the... Oh, I saw a hand. I don't know what that means.
Well, I came late to the game.
Please, if you're uncommitted to the application right here, if you're supporting the application, you were late to the game, I'm going to let you the...
Well, I'm not sure I...
You just became uncommitted.
I'm in support.
That's right.
Or Steve Gallifant. I own property at 2761 Poline, directly across the street, and we are still operating on the premise that it's kind of a retail corridor. Got Sunshine Travel, Johnson Chiropractic, beauty salon, hair barber shop, and also own property across the street at 2830 Poline. And I'm encouraged to have that building filled up, but I'm very concerned that it starts to look like a storage yard building adjacent to. It's got chain link fence all up to the front. Would like this to continue to serve purposes as retail rather than try and shift all of our retail out to Chubbix. We'd like to keep some in Pocatello. And again, would want to see some restrictions to make that appealing to the eye so it doesn't look like a storage yard or a... That's my concern. So, if you could take note of that and hopefully apply some of that. Again, would like to see the building filled up, like to see people in it, but I don't want it to just look like a used car lot or a... Not necessarily used car lot, that's bad, but there's a neighbor adjacent to me that's got three wrecked cars on the property, and it looks, would prefer it, it looks a little more professional on it, so.
So, I have a question. If I remember right, then as you're going, what, would that be west, I guess?
The old Nate's Lighting Center. Old guys.
We've got some, is there some shipping yards right there? Is the trucking?
As you move further to the west, yes, there's some.
Used to be Yellow Freight down the street.
Yellow Freight.
And White Oak and several along Cedar. What Steve's talking about is on Poline.
Yeah, we're on Poline. We're on Poline.
You're on the corner of Poline, right?
We're on Poline and Cedar.
Yeah.
Where the old teachers credit me most.
Yes.
Long down.
Okay.
So, again, I'd like to see the building filled up. Would like to see it presentable. Pocatello's a beautiful spot. Let's keep that.
Perfect. Thank you, Steve. Any other, before you leave, any questions for Steve? I didn't ask anybody else, but... Okay, thank you. Any others uncommitted to the application? Any opposed to the application? Okay, then there's a question on beautification. I don't know who to ask. It says for a rebuttal from the applicant, and so I'm assuming, Mr. Funk, you're the...
Well, United Rentals is a pretty first-class nationwide. As I mentioned, a Fortune 500 company, and they don't like junk. They're going to spend a considerable amount of money remodeling the project, totally resurfacing the parking, and in addition to adding, how big of a building are they going to have? A few thousand feet building to that. So, I think it'll be a real addition, you know, to that corridor. So, I just wanted to mention that everything will be done according to, you know, the standards of the city building codes and Department of Environmental Quality and things like that because it'll involve a fuel island and things like that for their equipment.
Okay. All right.
Can I ask a question? Fencing was mentioned. Is there any plans for some kind of...
You know, that part I could not address on fencing. Can you do that?
Okay.
Okay, any other... Hold on before you leave.
So, do they have plans to do anything aesthetic?
Well, they'll probably...
For the concerns of...
You know, it does meet the green belt, I mean, the green strip all around it with sprinklers and plantings. It will be maintained good where it is not right now.
So, it has the green space that is required, stuff?
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, Carl, the fencing.
So, the applicant is proposing a chain link fence with barbed wire along the top of that, along that fence. Staff is not recommending that that not be included at this time. If you drive over there, you'll see that the building supply company just to the north, as well as the school district, also include barbed wire fencing along their fences. So, we did not restrict that. However, they still need a building permit or a fence permit to be approved from our building department. So, that is up to our building department to approve or deny that. My understanding is usually not permitted for barbed wire within commercial general. Regarding the landscaping, that green strip adjacent to Poline would remain. Staff has added the condition that the street tree requirement be brought up to the current standard for commercial general, which is one street tree for every 50 linear feet. They have about 300, more or less, so they would need about six street trees to be planted there. We're not requiring that the display pads that are in that green strip be removed at this time, but that no displays be located within that area. Additionally, the lighting standard is also, we're requiring that the lighting be remain, excuse me, remain to meet the commercial general requirements rather than the light industrial. So, that means it'd be, Polines would be capped at the height of the primary structure there and not exceed what's permitted in the commercial general. So, still maintaining some of that characteristic of the CG. And it's also important to note, if this were vehicle sales, it would be permitted outright. The trigger here that's getting us to industrial services and sales is the size of the vehicles that we're looking at. So, usually the trigger there is 2.5 tons of vehicles greater than that. So, operation characteristics are very similar to what we would see for vehicle sales.
Okay. Super. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I declare the public hearing closed. Council decides before you how you wish to proceed. Yes?
I move that we approve the contract rezon for 2909 Poline, subject to the 10 conditions that are listed.
Second.
We have a motion by Bray and a second by Cheatham. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Seven, Short Platte Hamis Subdivision. Jeff and Cynthia Hamis, represented by Sean O'Brien of Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying, have submitted a short platte application to subdivide 3.1 acres, more or less, into two residential lots. The platte will be known as Hamis Subdivision. Council President Adamson.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the request.
Second.
We have a motion by Adamson and a second by Lurick.
Are there any conditions?
Are there?
Yes.
Would you include any conditions in that, Council President?
I would, thanks. Sorry, I got thrown off when you were saying something.
So, with conditions?
With the conditions in the staff report.
And the second is still good with it?
I second that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Then we'll, we have a motion by Council President Adamson and a second by Lurick. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Okay. Agenda, we'll move to Agenda Item Eight, Ettnier Falcon Live Bottom Trailer Bid Street Operations. Council may wish to accept the recommendations of staff and award the procurement bid for one 2018 Ettnier Falcon Live Bottom Trailer in the amount of $89,975 to Metroquip Incorporated. If approved, staff is requesting council's authorization for the mayor's signature on documents related to the purchase, pending legal department review. Funds are available in the street operations fiscal year 2020 budget.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd move for approval of Agenda Item Number Eight, purchase of the entire, the Ettnier Falcon Live Bottom Trailer bid. Authorize your signature, pending legal department review.
Second.
We have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Lurick. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Nine, 2405 Garraway Buildings Project Phase Three. Council may wish to accept the recommendations of staff for Phase Three of the 2405 Garraway Buildings remodel project. The recommendations are, A, authorize the mayor to execute a change order contract between Construction Services Incorporated and the city of Pocatello in the amount of $84,536, subject to legal department review. And if approved, B, authorize the amount of $84,536 from street operations and sanitation department reserves to be part of the May-June 2020 budget amendments. Councilman Bray.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the Phase Three project, that we authorize you to execute a change order of the contract for construction services, and that we also authorize the amount of $84,536 from street operations as occupation department reserves to be part of the May-June 2020 budget amendments.
Second.
We have a motion by Bray and a second by Ortega. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Ten is IFT Foundation Grant Request, Second Phase of Origami Art Display Airport. Council may wish to authorize the mayor to sign a grant application to the IFT Foundation in the amount of $8,000, and if awarded, accept the grant, subject to legal department review. The grant will be used to help fund Phase Two of an origami art display inside the Pocatello Airport Terminal. No matching funds are required.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'd move for approval of Agenda Item Number Ten, the Grant Request Application for the Second Phase of the Origami Art Display at the Pocatello Airport, authorizing you to sign the application, and if awarded, accept the grant, all subject to legal department review.
Second.
We have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Stevens.
I think it was...
I think it's pretty good. We've got everybody up here that's got some part of it going.
It's her birthday today. She should have named it, too.
Yes, indeed. We should have sang Happy Birthday, actually.
No, you shouldn't have.
Don't embarrass us.
Connie handled that.
Connie got that handled.
Most evilly, I must say.
She is a good one for it. So, we have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Stevens. Could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
You were thinking about the Happy Birthday song.
I was playing the video of Connie singing the Happy Birthday song. It was so memorable.
Fantastic. We'll move to Agenda Item Eleven is Discussion Items. This time it's been set aside to hear discussion items not listed on the agenda. Items which appear somewhere else on the agenda will not be discussed at this time. The council is not allowed to take any official action at this meeting on matters brought forward under this agenda item. Items will either be referred to the appropriate staff or scheduled on a subsequent agenda. You must sign in at the start of the meeting in order to be recognized. As a reminder, there's three minutes per speaker and a total of 15 minutes for this discussion item. Nikki Taysom.
Thank you. Nikki Taysom, General Delivery Pocatillo Idaho 83201. We just stated the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The preamble states, "We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, not Zion," and it means pure, "as one nation under God. We, the people, ensure domestic tranquility by promoting things that build up and lift people and keep them healthy in our environment, clean and healthy. Our founders and others from the founding of this country stated, first, we obey God. We don't cross that line. Two, we protect and strengthen the family as the foundation of our society, under God. Three, we promote and protect our liberties, our rights of property and free enterprise, under God, under the law of consecration, forgiveness, and talented bases and resources, to protect them sacred. And four, we don't empower anything that goes against any of it. A week ago, before this... property and free enterprise, under God, under the law of consecration, to give some talented bases and resources, to protect them sacred; and four, we don't empower anything that goes against any of it. A week ago, before this last weekend, there were four youth and young adults that attempted suicide. One succeeded on Monday. I've known this girl, she was 24, since she was a little child. I've been trying to prevent it for 12 years. She left her two-week-old baby. She's been through our system. She's been through a lot. We all know I've been in jail multiple times, and I stood in defense of those boys and girls in that jail, who are also in that same boat. We promote and license the alcohol, the porn, the satanic violent gaming, the tobacco, the vape, the lotteries, the things that are dragging us down into the gutter and destruction,